Yeah, what was last year?
Good evening, everyone. Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag. Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just a little heads up. If you have your device and you want to get on to the Wi-Fi today, the network is EPS Guest 3. And if you go, oh, if you go to user ID EPS dot guest and the password is Evergreen. So if you want to get into the, and look at the Board Docs, there's two ways to get to our Board Docs in the meeting. You can go to evergreenps.org, select Departments, select Agenda and Minutes, select Meeting Agenda and Minutes in the upper right-hand corner, and select today's date for the Board meeting and select View the Agenda. I think this is on a piece of paper over there, too, in case, just want you to know it's available. You could also go to Board Docs, oh, gosh, it's way too long. Just get the piece of paper. It'll tell you what to do. So that way you can follow along with us and see all the documents.
And that applies to the 16%.
Correct. Whatever he says. Okay, so our next order of business is I would like to entertain a motion to adopt today's agenda.
I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we can proceed along. Next is matters reserved for Board action. We will be adopting our operational expectation policies and our governance culture policies, Board Superintendent Relations Policies, Results Policies, and remand all current district policies to the Superintendent. Let me get you a little bit briefed on what, this is a second reading. And those policies are in a binder over by Elizabeth, right? So if anyone in the audience is curious about what those policies look like, you are free to either look at them up on Board Docs with the other instructions or come and get a binder to see what they look like. So this, we've had a first reading. We workshopped these over the summer. And now we are for a second reading for adoption of these policies. Do we have anyone in the audience who has questions or would like to make comment on any of these proposed policies? Met Gallery over there, you're good? So just for the record and for the video for people who are watching us from the convenience of their own home. Over the last four months, the Board deliberately and thoughtfully has created a new set of governing policies that will allow us to lead the organization in a much more powerful and accountable way. All members have participated in this venture. We have refined our value-driven policies to the point that we are ready to adopt and begin this exciting journey towards alignment and improved organizational performance, beginning in the boardroom and extending to every worksite. So again, I'm going to ask if there's anyone who would like to make comment or they have questions for the Board on this. Hey, I will entertain a motion.
I move to adopt operational expectation policies, the governance culture policies, the Board's Results Policy, and to remand all current district policies to the Superintendent. I'm going to just say item A, but...
Do I have a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I'm going to open it up for any Board Superintendent discussion or comments. Have anything to add?
Well, I would say this is a significant night in the history of the district. And while a lot of times when you're doing policy work, people see it as mundane and boring and tedious. This is really very exciting because this is a commitment by our school Board to focus on student results and make that their primary focus of the work that they're doing. The policies outline specifically things that I will always do when running the district, things I will never do when running the district. And the Board has clearly defined for me as the Superintendent those areas that they retain authority over in the operations areas of the district as well. So as a brand-new Superintendent, this is a great opportunity to understand clearly what the Board's expectations are as well as the results that the Board expects us to attain for students and helps students attain. It's going to be a lot of work over the next, probably 14 to 18 months in trying to determine how we're going to measure and show performance in these areas, both in compliance with the operations expectations as well as getting results for students. But I think we've got a great team that's also excited about doing this work because we think it's the right work to do. So that's kind of my two cents on this. I really appreciate the opportunity to be able here at the very beginning of this and to have spent the time with the Board this last summer and spring in developing these policies and understanding better the philosophy behind each of the areas of their concern and their priorities.
I'm excited to do this. Have anything else to add above what John said?
Hey, great. Anyone else?
Oh.
I made the motion.
I'm excited as well. Usually, yeah, talking about policies is the most exciting thing. But this is such a big shift and able to be able to define roles and responsibilities of what the Board does and what the Superintendent does and that focus on accountability, but also that focus on results. And I know we talked about it at the last Board meeting, more, you know, more detail about the policies that we're talking about today. But, you know, to reiterate that, you know, like that mega result policy is something I'm really excited about because we want all our students to succeed. We want them all to graduate. We want them to be successful after, you know, leaving high school in a career or post-secondary education, you know, depending on, you know, their choice. But we also want them to continue to be lifelong learners. And so as we go through this, I'm excited to see how we're going to be measuring that.
Been a lot of work and it's going to be a lot of work as we move forward, but I'm excited. And I'm also excited about the kind of transparency we'll be having with the community and staff as we roll out our communications plan. We'll be inviting much more comment and input from various stakeholders. So there's a lot coming down the pike and I'm really excited about it. And I hope everybody stays in tune to what we're doing so that they know when they can participate. So that being said, I will entertain, we'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're also redoing our parliamentary procedures. And so, excuse me if I stumble a little bit here on, we're doing things different. Next order of business. Oh, you know what? I'm going to call a halt because I see we have a scout in the audience. And I want to acknowledge that you're here. And if you wouldn't mind telling us your name and what school you go to and what badge you're working on. Great. Thank you for being here and you look very handsome in your uniform.
I thought he looked familiar. It's nice to see you again, Ethan.
All right. Now we can move to the Board's Consent Agenda. Consent Agenda has three items, all regarding minutes for the Board. Do I have a motion to approve the Board Consent Agenda?
Move that we approve the Board Consent Agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we have the Superintendent Consent Agenda. This is the portion of our meeting that pertains to kind of the day-to-day workings of the district, paying the bills, paying, you know, doing the payroll and other kinds of resolutions and agreements between us and others. Do I have a motion to approve the Superintendent Consent Agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I know, that's good. Next, we have a public hearing. This is in regards to the school district's budget. We have had individual meetings of each of the Board members with Mr. Merlino. And we had a first reading at our last Board meeting. And now it's time for a second reading and ready for a vote to approve our budget. So, Mr. Merlino, is there anything to add?
I have two weeks and I haven't had anything directed my way from the Board or from Dr. Stich or from the community. So I don't really have anything new to report tonight.
Hey, great. Thank you for all your work on this because I know it in light of the very short timeline, you guys had to really bust it out. So...
Yeah, the only thing I would mention is the resolution that if the Board approves it, it outlines expenditure amounts for all of the various funds that we have. It certifies levy amounts for the county to collect, both General Fund M&amp;O, the levies that was voted on, and then the Debt Service Fund Levy that was passed in 2002 when the bond was passed, allows us to make payments. And then also we'll authorize some transfers between funds for bus purchases and payments on technology bond and interest related to the QSCAP. So I just want to mention what it is, some of the specific things you're doing in the resolution, if you do pass it.
That would have been the shortest comment he's ever made, but you had to give him the opening.
Want to give him his moment in the sun.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Do you have any comments or questions by the audience?
Oh, just one.
So I will now take a motion to adopt Resolution Number 5959.
So moved.
Second.
Have any discussion or comments by the Board?
What was it? Just looking at the budget numbers, once again, we've got a budget that allocates 74% of all the money to teaching supports, which sometimes comes up in patron questions and stakeholder questions is that, yes, I'm personally very glad that we have the finance staff that we do, keeping this as on track as it is. We've never had any kind of major audit findings from budgets going back as far as I can remember. And I began paying attention a long time ago. And I really appreciate that work and the maintenance of our finances that way.
And that we could add, too, that our technology has been in our general budget, that we haven't had to go outside of our general budget and ask for a technology bond or something to pay. Fantastic that we've been able to do the things that we're doing.
Right, and this budget, yeah, continues that personalized learning initiative, continues the equity initiative. And to echo what you were saying, yeah, I really appreciate the work of Mike Merlino and his staff. So, yeah, thank you very much.
Fuck. Okay, well, there's, John, did you have anything?
No.
Okay. Okay, well, then I will be open, oh, I keep wanting to do it the old way. Sorry. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, resolution is passed. I swear I'll get this sooner or later. Next up is the Superintendent's Report.
So last week was a big week for the district. We kicked it off on Monday with our Management Seminar Equity Day. Kim Feick worked with all of our administrators talking about cultural awareness and how to do, how to better accommodate and work with our minority populations in our district as part of our equity work. We followed that with three days of a one-by-one conference, a very successful one-by-one conference. We had John Antonetti, Kristin Zimke, and Simon Tam from Slants as our keynote speakers. We had over 1,000 participants in a conference. And if you can, it, I'm almost speechless when I think of the fact that as a district, we put on a conference with that level of keynote speakers, the quality of breakout sessions, and we served over 1,000 individuals from our local community. It was highly successful, especially for just the second year, and really gives us a bar to set to try to outdo that next year. And I know the planning started Thursday afternoon last week on how we're going to be able to improve upon our conference. Just this week, we've had our new teacher orientation. And I never did get the final number. It was just under 200. I'm sure Janay, I don't know, do you know the exact? 155? Okay, a little less than I thought. So 155, but actually, we're not quite done yet in our hiring. It's trying to tie things up as quickly as possible. But it was a good mix of teachers from, brand-new teachers right out of school to transfers from other districts and even other states. And I think we got some really good hires this year to come in and continue the work and add to our diversity of staff as well. Looking towards next week, or later this week, we have a Parent Information Night at Frontier on Thursday night where we're going to be working with parents to sign the Acceptable Use Forms and the Device Issuance Forms in preparation for Frontier Middle School going one-to-one during the first week of school, hopefully, if we can get as many forms as we can get signed. Legacy High School is already working on theirs as well. So those two schools should start off within the first week of school as one-to-one take-home device schools, which is exciting. Once we get a couple of weeks under our belt and make sure that these devices work properly and don't start failing on us as a different device did last year, we're poised to make the final purchase and then start distributing all the 6 through 12 devices throughout the fall and hopefully not too far into the winter before we can get those done. And that'll allow us to then move the current Chromebooks from the high schools and middle schools down into the elementary schools. So by the time we're done with this deployment, we should have one-to-one devices at a minimum, 2nd through 12th grade, and pretty close to one-to-one in kindergarten and first grade as well as we take the iPads that we have throughout the district and repurpose those down into kindergarten and first grade. On working on the bond, we've had some activity over the summer. We've had a Facility Core Team met again today to look at what our prototype elementary school is going to be that we're going to propose, which is foundational for us putting the budget together. The one concern I have that I'm going to say out loud right now is as we've tracked other projects in the region that have gone out for bid, the escalation on construction is far higher than what we had originally anticipated. So when we come back to the Board in September with the scope of what we think we can do for the bond, there may be a couple of projects that we thought were going to be in last spring that, to be prudent on the current escalation, construction escalation rates, we may have to put a couple of those as contingent based on us being able to either get additional SCAP money from the state or matching funds from the state or a change in the bid climate and construction around, in the Vancouver-Portland area. Also had an interview with Temple Lentz today.
That's always entertaining.
Yes, it was a lot of fun and it'll be on a noon radio show sometime next week. She'll let us know when she gets that scheduled. So it was an enjoyable time. And the last thing is next Wednesday is the first day of school. And I will be going live with K2 News at 5:45 out at Frontier. And you know what a morning person I am. I will be there at 5:45. Don't know how awake I'll be. And for Board members, if you plan on being out at the schools, if you could coordinate with Elizabeth so that she knows where you're going to be and we make sure you're either not all at the same place at the same time or we advertise it as a potential Board meeting just in case, that would be helpful.
Always a fun day. Good. So next up, we have Board comments, yep. And I just want to say, last week was amazing and fun. You know, I got to see all the keynote speakers and they were so fascinating and funny and they were just really good. I heard a lot of great comments from staff about how much they were enjoying the workshops. A lot of people, I mean, several of the rooms I went into, they were just packed. Ran into a lady that was, is a new teacher to us that has been in another district and she just was, couldn't believe that we had this comprehensive of workshop or training for professional development. She's just like, I didn't know districts could do this. Yeah, so kudos to the planners of that, Mr. Kristin. So it was good. I mean, you guys were amazing. The musical entertainment, not just from the Slants, but from yours truly and friends.
I saw the YouTube.
Pretty good. It was fun. It was really fun and it, people enjoyed it. So I really think it was a huge hit. Lee was there, Todd was there.
I agree. I enjoyed, unfortunately, I couldn't stay throughout most of the day, but I did get each morning for the keynote speakers and for the Management Seminar when John spoke to the management team. Fantastic. I loved starting my day that way. I was thinking, this would be great if I could start my workday every day with a keynote address. But they were fantastic and I enjoyed being there. And I also received a lot of feedback throughout the week. And then even, I'm still receiving feedback that everyone enjoyed it. And Victoria and I had a conversation that we, this could be like, you know, cutting edge for like the world and the United States to come to our seminar and our conference because it was huge. It was really impressive.
It was, it was good.
Yeah, we could cause our own traffic jam here on 137th.
I predict that in a matter of a few years, we will out, we won't have enough room. We'll have to find a bigger venue.
I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll echo that, too. I mean, I was able to attend two of the three keynotes. I was not able to attend the opening day one, but as Rob says, yeah, your YouTube wrapping by you and the group was awesome with the costumes by Heather. I don't know what you guys are going to do for next year.
I know. That's why they had to start planning that on Thursday.
Yeah, that's true.
I've never seen a high-level school leader burst into song before.
Oh, man. I wish I could have seen the looks on people's faces.
That was really neat.
But the keynotes, yeah, I really enjoyed being able to meet and hear Simon Tam. I really enjoyed the talk on Wednesday as well. And, yeah, the enthusiasm in the room was huge. And I just could not believe that a conference like that could be pulled off by a school district. And with the high attendance, I guess most of the people there were from the Evergreen District, right? But there were some people there from outside of the district?
Yeah, I heard 35, I was going to say 30 to 40. And we have one in the audience.
Nice, yeah, great job.
And I should have thanked the administrators who were willing to join me onstage and go out of their comfort zone. And that was really the message that wasn't in the YouTube video, but that I said after we got done is we're expecting our teachers this year with the deployment of all of these devices, the implementation of personalized learning. We're asking them to get out of their comfort zone and try new things. And the best way that I thought I could lead by example is take some of the building principals who have never been onstage and some of the central office administrators and say, we're going to get out of our comfort zone and we're going to do something that's entertaining, but it has a message. And I really appreciated the kids from Union High School stepping up and covering our inadequacies and song.
They were good.
But again, really want to thank the administrators for getting out of their comfort zone and being willing to do that.
I won't miss it next time.
It was fun.
Let's just make a plan.
It was good and I enjoyed the workshops.
One more thing, Foundation had their annual Stuff the Bus on Saturday. Spent some time out there, saw several of you. We were at a new location this year. We partnered with the Family Fun Fest. So we don't know if we had, because we were thinking that everybody who came to the Family Fun Fest was going to bring a school supply. Not sure it worked out that way. But we do feel like we built some awareness for future years that people will come back and know that we're out there and make some donations. But we did get a lot of much-needed backpacks, which is what we were really looking for. And those are being spread out to the schools this week.
Last and last, not least, or hopefully not least, as you all know, my term expires on November 5th. That in mind, I've decided for personal reasons to step down a little bit early and take all that vacation time that I'm owed. And my resignation letter will be...
Well, Michael, I really appreciate, I really appreciate your service to the district. And nobody can analyze a policy like you and nobody can remember every RCW that's out there. It's shocking how you have total recall of this stuff. So I think that's a contribution that we will miss. So maybe we'll call you with homework assignments to help us on.
I'm sure that we're going to call. I'm going to call, Michael.
Where are you going to call him?
Yeah, every time there's a candidate for him, I get a call. Thank you, Victoria.
That and the bill numbers. I met Michael when I was first appointed to the Instructional Materials Committee.
Yeah, Rob and I have known each other a long time.
10 years ago? Something like 10 years ago. And you've kind of been an information resource, a guide and a mentor to me ever since then. I've really appreciated over the years the clarity of thought and the analytical skill that you've brought to those positions and to your position on the Board. I don't know which of us is going to be the ones to remember all the bill numbers. And I'm getting afraid that it's going to be me and I don't think I can. That's not, all right, well, we'll take notes or something. But it has been a tremendous convenience to be able to rely on that kind of ability. And it's big shoes to fill. Appreciate it. Yeah, bigger than mine. And I really appreciated your sense of humor over the years as well with all of this.
Sometimes I have, but other times I have not.
I could tell some stories, but they'd be out of order for this meeting. Thank you for your service.
And Michael, I'll miss being on the Board with you. I think we've been on the Board together for eight years?
Yeah, Todd, good.
Yeah, eight years. And what, two terms?
Who's going to rose two here?
Oh, I don't know. I don't know. But one of the things I appreciate about you is you keep up to date on what's going on, especially legislatively. And you can sort of not only figure out what's going on on the surface, but you're thinking like two steps ahead of what this could mean for us as a district. And that level of deep thinking is what's really, I think, really helped us. And I really appreciate that level of attention and level of detail and strategic thinking. I mean, I really appreciate that. We also worked pretty closely together four years ago, I think, when, you know, you were Vice President, I was President. So we got to talk a lot together in trying to figure out ways to best serve the district. So I'll miss you, but hopefully you'll have time to enjoy your family more as well as your baseball games.
And my flowers.
Flowers.
Although staying two steps ahead of our legislature isn't...
I'll miss you, too. I don't know if I'll miss you giving... I don't know who's going to take that place, but I don't like... I do thank you for your service. Fantastic school Board member. All right. It's all good.
And on behalf of the community and the administration and the staff of the school district, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we'll wait for you to send us that letter. Didn't even put a stamp on it. He is kind of a cheapskate. All right, well, we'll...
That's good for the budget.
We'll vote on whether or not we accept it at the next board meeting.
At the next meeting, yes.
Yes. Hey, we have any future agenda items?
I think that would be the future agenda item to add.
Okay.
To add it.
No, no, I think we're good. Okay, so I'm going to call this meeting into recess. We will sign documents. Then we will reconvene in a workshop where we will have a board meeting debrief, legislative updates, an initial interpretation of operational expectations, OE2, emergency superintendent succession. We will have a discussion regarding boundary appeals, a budget update, and a superintendent's, another superintendent's update. This meeting is adjourned. Oh, no, in recess. Sorry. Recess only.